Alright, good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Arcola, City Council regular meeting for Tuesday, September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, beginning at six P M in Arcola City Hall, located at one three, two-two-two Highway six, Arcola, Texas, seven-seven-five-eight-three, for the purpose of considering the following items. The City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas, reserves the right to meet and close the session on any of the below items should the need arise, and if applicable, pursue it to authorization by Title V, Chapter five, five-one of the Texas Government Code. It is now six P M, and I call this meeting to order, recognizing that we do have four. Tonight's invocation will be done by Councilmember Roseberry Bigley. Oh, I'm sorry, by, I'm sorry, by Councilmember Jones, and will be led by the pla, be followed by the Players of Beliegest by Councilmember Fred Burton.
Father, come to you tonight in the name of Jesus. Lord, we thank you for this day, and thank you for life, health, and strength. Lord, we just thank you for all that you've done already, what you're doing right now, and what you want to do. We ask you to come into the hearts and the minds of all the councilmembers, Lord. Touch our hearts, Lord, enable us, Lord, to do what's best for the city and the citizen, to take self out of way, and just, you know, continue to bless Arcola to grow and to be a city that someone will be proud to be from, and to come to help us all in our things that we're doing for your work, for your glory and your honor. These are our blessings in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I pray my allegiance to the Lord, and to the United States of America, and to the people who understand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with unity and justice and suffering.
Okay, um, let me do a roll call first. City Councilmember Evelyn Jones.
Here.
Mayor Prokhor Kim, Fred Abor.
Here.
Councilmember Roseberry Bigley.
Here.
Councilmember Florence Jackson, present. Councilmember Fred Burton.
Here.
Also President David Olson, City Attorney, Ingrid Foynoy, the City Secretary, Dr. Annette Hardo, Grover, City Administrator, and Munis Jackson, our Finance Commissioner. Uh, before we get started on tonight's, uh, agenda, I'd like to take a moment of silence to acknowledge, uh, the passing of, uh, Councilmember Baby's brother and, uh, my neighbor, and, uh, just take a moment.
My neighbor.
Oh, yes, and then Jack and Miss Jones' neighbors as well. Okay, thank you. And, you know, you have ideas for sympathy, uh, condolences. Okay, um, at this time, uh, we will have public comments of a general nature, uh, Mayor Secretary, do we have anyone?
Yes, Mayor.
Comments on the general, uh, the, um, general comments will be limited to three minutes, and six minutes if you need to translate.
We have Miss Anna, um, can I say last name wrong? Is it Mrs.?
It's Vanessa.
Vanessa, I apologize. Yeah, um, could you come up and?
Good evening, to all of you.
Good evening.
I, um, just wanted to, I haven't been around for a long time, you know, there's been many issues, but, um, when you used to be in my position, as a ma, you know, now you're a mayor, you always used to harp on the budget, and, um, you know, and it's like what the city is coming to and everything, and I see the budget and it scares me. It scares me that there's money that's going to things that I think, it was, you know, what worries me is that there is money going to nonprofit that you have chose, but you didn't put it up for the vote. There's other nonprofits here in Arcola that we pay, we're taxpayers, and we haven't been asked if that's okay. Another thing, um, our neighborhood still has a lot of light poles that don't have electricity. We have a lot of problems with the drainage. The, the people that mow the lawns, that's a third issue, they mow up until a certain area, and then they just stop. And I don't know what that has to do, or who do we have to talk to, because it's ridiculous that they go and they mow up until a certain point, and then the rest of the houses, like two, three neighborhoods over, they just kind of stop. But, you know, we're all paying taxes, and I just, I would like some more clarification as to why there's so much waste on, you know, the way that we're looking at it, waste with the funds, because there's just, you know, the budget, I think it's over budget. So anyway, that was, that's something that I wanted to say, and you have my email, you can send me the information as to who do I need to talk to, to get this taken care of, the drainage, the electricity, the budget. Thank you.
Uh, I, I know we are accustomed when I should respond to these things, but, uh, when there are inaccuracies, I want to make sure that the public, because everybody is looking at this, when they close the city, look at Arcola. First of all, I don't ever recall talking about the budget, because, uh, I didn't know what the bu, city's budget was when I was a private citizen, so, uh, and I felt like we had elected leaders to come in and oversee the city, and I felt like they were doing that, so that's what I thought. Uh, as far as that nonprofit, you think, at the time, Mayor Burton for bringing in a nonprofit group, uh, because he was one brought it in, it's the same nonprofit, they were, worked for three years under his, after three or four years, may, under him, and so we've taken it over, uh, because it was working, uh, uh, and, and so therefore we continued the same practice. As far as light poles, that, that has nothing to do with us, that's, that's CenterPoint's stuff. Uh, call them, because I have to pay for mine, uh, personal, so.
Has it went up yet?
Huh?
Has it went up?
It has gone up, yes, it certainly has.
Certainly has.
Yes, and as far as drainage, uh, thank you, but this city has never done anything since I've been around dealing with drainage until this year. So thanks to this administration, to this council who were, who was here, all the council who was here when we voted on it, the city finally has somebody doing something about drainage in the city, and, uh, you're welcome, so. Next, Mayor Secretary, do we have anybody else?
Yes, Mayor, we have one more. Uh, we have Jarson.
Jason.
Jason, I apologize.
How y'all doing today?
Alright, mate.
Uh, my condolences on hearing about your brother, I can see by your motion, it hurt. Um, I have local business in the area, um, I've had multiple issues on water, I've had multiple people dumping illegal trash at my dumpster. I've tried to get an appointment with this administration, because we come as friends, we are businesses paying tax dollars to this city. The previous administration, I had no problems getting license plates, I had no problem people going after people dumping illegally in my dumpster. I've given five reports to this administration, to this police officers, because they don't care, because they're not the ones, I'm going there in my truck hiring my people, because these people want to dump whole couches in front of my dumpster, you know? Look, I'm not the type to go bother somebody, put it in the dumpster, I don't, you know, I, I understand people don't have trash out here, I ain't that type, but when you leave a whole couch set, like the videos I've shared with, it costs me money and time to go out there, and you know nobody working for less than a hundred dollars a day now? And I gotta go pay somebody one fifty to go dump, then I gotta go pay the dump legally, another seventy-five, bring my utility bill to show them that I'm legally dumping, you know? It's just like, I wish I would get some response, I wish, like the one thing I bring up to you, Miss Annette, you know, before, we was, uh, appointments, now it's like we just cut off, like we don't even want to, because we were associated with the previous administration, we don't, we don't matter no more. It's like we're just blackballed, and I hate that, because, you know, we're businesses in the city, and I come in and try and be friends with every administration, because that's the best for me, okay? It's whether I'm friends with you after administration or not, that's my business, because I don't just turn friends like that, okay? And I hope y'all do something about this, because the next step for me is, obviously we already have attorneys coming, next is sue the city, and I'm sick of this, because it's a waste of my money, but if I don't do nothing and I don't bring attention to it, I'm the one that's going to suffer all the time. And it's crazy, because I called Fort Bend County and complained, I know my time's running real short, but I called Fort Bend County to complain, oh yeah, we're going to take area, guess who they sent calling? C R called, I'm like, really? This is their solution? After, I called y'all because C R called wouldn't do shit. I talked to Officer Smith, I was promised a call from Chief Carr, guess what? That didn't happen either. It's like, I feel like we're being discriminated against because of who we supported in the previous administration. And like I said, we, we're just businesses trying to make, we're trying to be friends with everybody, we don't want no enemies, it doesn't benefit us. Let's make the city grow together, work together, but not sue and sue this, this bullshit.
Uh, well, we will find a way to try to address your issues, because you know what? They're dumping in four or five other places in the city, so, I mean.
But before we had the solutions.
No, sir, and you, if, so if you can't find, well, you know what? I wish that we'd had solutions when they stole all the City of Arcola's equipment, so if you had solutions, but if you had solutions for illegal dumping, there should have been solutions for all, things that happened at the night, we cannot, we don't know, but when we find out that there are illegal, there are dumps, our guys have been taking that stuff, picking it up, and, and as far as you calling, I, I have no, I have no record of you calling for me.
Yeah, he has called.
Both the times, I thought that was the quick route to get a point.
But what I'm saying is.
Wrong time and place, we'll figure it out.
Mayor, can I just, sir, it's, it's a Ken and Mike problem, we do have our detective work on that street, uh, it's, it's in the neighborhoods, it's, it's in the businesses, it's, it's a own law problem, there's an actual investigation, and we all work for it.
Yeah, I, I, I appreciate that, Sergeant Burns, but the thing is, I invest in license plate cameras, so this is no guessing, I'm giving you the people that are legally doing it, I pulled my own private investigators, I have the Fresno address, the last person that done, but no one's taken action and went to him and given him a ticket. Does the city make money on people illegally dumping, getting tickets? Why didn't y'all look at it as a positive thing?
Sir, we will, I, I had no idea about your concern, uh, now that you, you made us aware of it, we'll, we'll follow up and.
Thank you.
And I don't know what the deal is with the water, but we'll.
Well, we'll do a bit.
We'll address those things.
It's not the time, public comments.
Yeah, I understand that it's public comments, but if people decide to use public comments to come in here and, and lodge accusations and stuff, I don't have to keep you doing that, we're going to set the record straight, when, when we have some, you know, your concern, like I said, I'm, we're going to take time to address your concern, this is the first time I'm hearing about it, I, I kid you not, however, we will take time to address it if you got that in.
Thank you, Mayor.
So, yes.
I just have to say, one of the concerns was the grease trap, and Roland is here, he's provided an updated grease trap, um, report, and so I'll, I'll be sure and send that too, because I know you called about that. We just got it today, thank you.
Okay, Mayor Secretary?
Mayor, we have no more public comments.
Okay, do we have any more comments for, any comments for consent or regularly deny?
No, Mayor.
Okay. At this time, I will, uh, entertain whether the City Councilmembers have comments, uh, Councilmember Burton?
You want to start over here, okay. Yeah, first, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, the light poles, simple fix, call the City Secretary, City Secretary post contact CenterPoint with an I D number that's on the pole, that's how we get lights.
You have six years to give them.
Can I please correct that? That's not, that's not what I'm supposed to do, but we do have online where they can easily access how to get the street lights fixed.
If they never been on, if they never been hooked up, there's an I D number on the pole, and ever since I've been here, which is about twenty-six years, we turned that number over to the City Secretary. City Secretary will come in.
They should be working.
And they were correct, it is fixed. Second, my name come up in the summer program. Summer program was created under my administration, but it hasn't been around six years. Formats are written over six years, that's not true. So, if I'm going to be called out on something on the previous, then I would correct that the best I can. Next, uh, we have, uh, on the agenda, the budget. You know, two months ago, two, two months ago, I asked through, for longer than two months, I've been trying to find out what the city spent on a mock investigation against myself. You seen it on po, on social media, I asked for it, I sent emails to the secretary, Turner said she can't get it to me, I asked for it as a council member, and I was told in the last dress rehearsal meeting, they called it, uh, the Monday meeting we have, that I would have it at the next, the next evening, which I hadn't got it yet, but the budget is in, I mean, the budget, we, we got the budget here, and I've been looking at it all day today, and I still can't find what was spent on the investigation. Is it a secret, or is it just none of my business as a council member? All I'm asking is, well, are we spending taxpayers' dollars? And when we get in the budget, it's a lot of other stuff that I got highlighted, but I, this is something that's near and dear to me, because my name is on that, so I'm asking, Mr. Attorney, do you have it for me to see?
Have what for you to see?
You said you would let me know what was spent on the investigation.
Of the actual dollar amount?
Yes.
Uh, we have the invoices are available, I don't have them on me right now, yes, we have the total amount.
It's been three months, and I'm asking, when will I get it?
I had the whole thing before him last, the last meeting when he wanted it, he ran out here so fast, I didn't run behind him and chase him, but I told, I did mention during the meeting, it was sixteen thousand dollars and something, Mr. Burton.
I'd like to see it, I would like to see.
Well, you are not going to see the investigation, because.
I don't want to see the, I want to see the dollar now, I don't care about the investigation, I just want to see the dollar, I want to see how do we spend taxpayers' dollars as pertained on me.
You need to worry about what's in that investigation.
I, I don't care, hey, listen, you've been investigating me forever, okay, keep on investigating, keep spending, that's not a problem. That is not a problem, as a council member, I asked for it, I can't get it in public, I can't get it in open records, I mean.
Is it, is it three minutes?
I don't want three minutes.
Is it three minutes?
We don't have three minutes.
Not for the, unfortunately, not for the council.
Now you want to take away the mic?
Mr. Burton, we, Mr. Burton, we don't have a problem showing you exactly how much that is, I had the information for you last meeting, you ran out of here, because you were mad, and so I do have.
I, I, I never leave, look, you ain't never seen me mad, I mean, I done took, what you did to A T was nothing compared to what I took, I mean, that's nothing, and you'll never see me mad. What I did was, I left because the meeting was over, which is what I supposed to do, I have no problem, no angle management or nothing like that. I just asked for something as elected official, oh, well, tax dollars are being spent, that is what they're going for me up here for?
But can you please focus on elect, representing the people and.
I'm trying, it's their money.
Focus on you, Mr. Burton, and we're happy, we're happy to give you, we're happy to give you their amount, if you stay after council meeting, I'll give you their amount that we spent.
Why, why it can't be public?
I just told you.
Why it can't be public?
Mr. Burton, it's.
We gonna talk about these numbers here in the lip bit, we gonna talk about the budget, I got questions on the budget.
But it was sixteen thousand dollars and something, I don't have the exact number right in front of me, so, Mr. Burton, I know we're, I know this is a, an election year coming up, Mr. Burton, you trying to campaign, but we do know.
Listen, it wasn't, it wasn't the election, it wasn't the election year when I started asking for it.
At this time, I, I'm going to ask this, can somebody call adjourn, can y'all adjourn this meeting for a second, I'm going to go get the sixteen thousand dollars and let him know, I, I know, I'm going to do this, I'm in control of the meeting, can I?
You could do whatever you want, you the mayor, I'm just saying, I asked for something, and I thought I should, you didn't get it.
Seven, how long?
A little five minutes.
I got a motion to, for five minutes.
You always get your motions in, in seconds, when.
We are adjourned.
Okay, we adjourned.
It is, it is at six-twenty P M, we are adjourned.
Girl, please, there's a law for recess, please. She said adjourn, she said recess.
She said adjourn.
She adjourned, recess.
She say reset, ten minutes.
Recession, ten minutes, recess.
Mercy move out to the right.
There's no motion necessary.
Recession.
City Secretary, so who, where, where am I supposed to call about the poll?
So it is CenterPoint, um, but if you go onto the Arcola website, we have a concerns page, and it'll tell you, if you're looking to, about streetlights, it takes you directly to the link for CenterPoint Energy, and where you can just type it in, and I swear to you, it doesn't even take them a whole two days to, to answer your request to come out and look, now, if you do have a poll number, it makes it easier, but they do have a locator, if you put in like the front street, if you know that, as close as possible.
It's right in front of my nose.
Yes, so then.
There's never been a light on it, it's just.
Okay, so then it might be something different, I'm not really sure, but it would be CenterPoint, if it's a light pole, then it would be CenterPoint, who would do that, yes.
I'd start doing lunges, get ready for skiing.
The moment I have to find out for you, uh, and find out more information, do you have like the street that is not being touched?
I think that's our new.
Let me give you my address.
It's in my email.
All of those limits, all of them, it says, and, he said, he said, limits, council, council, yes. Oh no, I'm just, I'm called, just waiting, it's up to the mayor once he comes.
Okay, okay, I told you to, so I didn't know.
Yeah, I think he can start.
Okay, okay, let's, let's go ahead and get restarted, please, uh, it is now, uh, six-twenty-seven P M, we going to go ahead and, uh, re, go back into regular session at this time.
She's doing the recording today, I forgot the.
This is official video and audio today.
Okay, so make sure, everybody, if you speak, make sure you speak into the, uh, microphone, because they, if you have a question, no worry about it. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Burton, uh, I, I, and I, I will say today I misquoted, last, last week, in a, in a minute, I quoted it correctly, that the city has paid, I said twenty-eight thousand dollars to investigate, it's in your, it's in your binder, it's been in your binder, it's in the meeting minutes, I'll page ten from last week, and the total amount was twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and six, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six and seventy cents. I quoted it correctly last week when I, uh, gave it to you then, so my mistake today, I'm saying sixteen thousand off, but, uh, so anyway, to address your issue.
Go back the other way, Mr. Burton, go the other way.
So, one more time. At this point, uh, Mr. Burton, uh, do you have any other concerns, that comments that you'd like to continue to make?
No, they'll, they'll come up asking me to go through the budget, uh.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jones?
Thank you, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
How's it going today?
Um, Mr. Burton's coming over to the press, uh.
The P E.
I was just.
We can't hear you.
Can you, I was just reminiscing about when he was mayor, and we had an investigation into a council member without the council's consent, we never consented to that, and he did it, including going to the children's school, videotaping, he showed the videos right here, of the babies eating in their garage and doing stuff, all this stuff, the council, the council didn't know, we didn't know about all the money he was spending without council's approval on to investigate a council member, but if, when he's investigated for being, being done under his administration, there's a big problem, but if you do something, you have to be able to accept the consequences, because you did it, so when you're doing it, if it's right for you to do it, which it wasn't, and you did it anyway, so don't get upset when they're saying. So don't get upset when the same judgments come at you. Because everything that's being done to investigate you is actually lawful, and it's finding so much stuff that was being done under that administration, that was not in the best interest of the city or the citizen. So, when you get somebody who's trying to do right by the city and city, then you should back them instead of coming up with little comments, sneaky stuff that ain't true, half truths, bunch of outright lies. If you want what's best for the city and not just wanna follow, be a follower of a leader who's not an actual good leader, then something wrong with you too. You should look at the mirror and see what you could see in, and see if what you're seeing is something that's gonna make you proud. And quit being somebody just for letting somebody lead you out, like you don't have thoughts for yourself, think for yourself. Don't just get around and just somebody tell you something, and you follow, don't do that, think for yourself. Ain't nobody, ain't no kids in here, maybe one or two, they not, but we gotta quit letting people lead us wrong. If you wanna be led wrong, that's a bad thing, I don't care who wrong, do the right thing by yourself. If you do by yourself right, you can do by others right, thank you.
Councilmember Ebar, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem.
No comments, ma'am.
Councilmember Ebar.
Yeah, my comment is, I'm still looking. I'm still looking for receipts, uh, for the sign that we put up, that we paid a fortune for, and we have yet to get, to get a receipt. But Mr. Burton is worried about what we spent on investigating him about not reporting back, where is the sign? All I wanna know, where's the sign, where's the receipt that was given to whomever, uh, took it to store it? Where's the storage bill, uh, Mr. Burton, do you have a storage bill?
I'm not, I'm not in the science business.
Okay, 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 just, just make your comments, just make your comments. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Burton, just make your comments.
I would like to know how much was spent, the exact amount that was spent on that, uh, marquee sign.
Over fifty thousand dollars.
It was over fifty thousand dollars, and then we paid storage.
Yeah, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, then we have.
Yeah, you gotta talk about things you know about, not things you think about.
Uh, Mr. Burton?
I know the sign is missing.
Well, you gotta talk about things you know about, not what you think about.
Mr. Burton, can you please allow she is finishing her comments?
My name come out, I'll respond some kind of way.
Okay, I'm done.
No, thank you.
I have comments, um, y'all listen, I, I got into this place, into this position, just to try to help my community. Um, you know, politics doesn't have to be like this, because that's what all of this is about, it's about politics. And, you know, we don't have to do that, I mean, the city of Arcola has been put out here for so long in, in, in a negative light and stuff, and, listen, I, I just felt like this was, you know, God allows all of us an opportunity to give back and stuff. And, and so I felt like this was an opportunity for me. Ms., Ms. Burton, I will say this, I don't have a problem, if the voters vote you in and may, I will gladly acquiesce this position. I won't spend one second trolling the next person who sits into this seat. If I can't help them, you won't ever get from me trying to come and constantly badger about it, the smallest of things. So I'm just trying to work, all I'm trying to do is work on behalf of the, the people here in this city who elected me to be in this city, in, in this position. Had they decided something different, I would gladly accepted that, because I trust the voters of this city. So, uh, you know, we just, I, I just wanna move the city forward, and, um, I understand that it's gonna come with some, some criticism, and, and I'm happy to, your criticism about the budget, I get that, I, nobody's gonna like, that, that's, that's positive, I mean, that's criticism that I can accept, because that's about what we're doing for the people in this city, so I welcome those criticisms. But what I will say is that we are in a better situation financially than we have been in a very long time. We're in a better position financially than we were last year when I took over. And, and so, I'm just, I'm just saying, if y'all, y'all, you know, give us a chance, give the administration a chance to do what it's going to do. That's, that's all I've asked for, and I think the council who have gotten behind the vision for the city and, and voted to do the things, everything we've done has been to benefit the residents of this city. Dean Williams hasn't benefited one bit from being in this position. And, I mean, aside from the twelve thousand dollars, that, twelve, twelve hundred dollars stipend per month, I will put it out there, I mean, that's all I get from this position. So please know that it's just to work on behalf of people, and so anyway, I get off my soapbox comment, and, uh, we'll move on to the, to the agenda.
Mayor, we're moving on to, cause the, um, uh, agenda item three, cause the agenda, three A, consideration of and action on the approval of the minutes of the workshop on Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty five, and regular meeting on Tuesday, August twelfth, twenty twenty five, Ingrid Flurnoy, City Secretary.
Y'all have to just look over the minutes, council.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for August eleventh, twenty twenty five, and August twelfth.
Motion has been made by Mayor Protem Ebar, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion's passed.
Moving on to agenda item four, presentation, information only, for a August twenty twenty five permit monthly report, Mr. Marquise Walker.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor.
Good evening.
My name's Marquise, and I'm here to give an account for the permits that were issued for the month of August. Um, there were six new water sewer taps that were issued, two electrical permits, one solar panel permit, one field dirt permit, four mechanical permits, one foundation repair permit, two plumbing permits, one infrastructure permit, and two building permits, totally twenty for the month of August.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
Agenda item four B, city engineer report, Mr. Laris Tana Kaluva.
Don't adjust. Good evening.
Good evening.
So you should have my report in front of you, uh, just following up on projects that are under construction. Uh, still working on the Arcola Water Plant Expansion, which is right next door to you. Uh, everything's still on track as it relates to that particular project, we're looking at trying to wrap that project around the first quarter of twenty twenty six. Uh, the Arcola, uh, wastewater treatment plant expansion, this is expansion number two, that project's still continuing. It's still on track as scheduled. Uh, the next one on there is the sanitary sewer evaluation and rehabilitation, that's just an ongoing project that we're always monitoring, the I N I, we got the stations set up and looking at areas that may have potential issues. That's just an ongoing project that's part of the S S O, uh, that we signed up for. The Arcola roadway drainage project improvements, uh, they're actually, I talked to the contractor today, they're looking at trying to come back in. I wanna say within the next week they'll be in, uh, they do have West Plantation and McKeever, they're gonna be working on that. And there, I can't remember the other streets.
South Pine.
Uh, South Pine, and there's two other ones I don't have on my mind. And so they'll get those when they come back here as well. The last construction project is the sanitary sewer lift station, rehabilitation to North Pine Street, sanitary sewer relocation. Uh, contractors ordered the pipe, he's anticipating that the pipe should come in around the first part of November, and then they'll start relaying that sanitary sewer line, um, along North Pine Street. Under design projects, the wastewater treatment plant expansion permit, it's still at T C E Q, no movement on that, they'll give it to us. It has gone past draft, and so, I, I wish I could tell you when, I'm not even gonna tell you, because whatever I tell you is not gonna be wrong, but it's out of our control. Uh, the state controls that right there. Uh, relocation of the infrastructure, uh, within five twenty one, our, our plans are almost complete, the only thing we're working on now is crossing the railroad right of way, that's always a challenge trying to cross the railroad. Uh, we have worked with them on trying to get our permit approved, uh, but that's the last thing before we'll go out for bids on that. And I wish I could tell you that next month I could have that to happen, but that's, I don't have any control on that. The other thing is, we need to see about that easement, uh, we're not, you know, we're not in control of getting that easement, but uh, over there in front of the Lime Batch Concrete Plant, uh, we're getting additional easement for us to relocate those utilities in that area. Uh, the design for the, from one point four to one point eight, that's still under design right now, and it's on track as we presented with the schedule. That concludes my report, I'll entertain any questions anybody have of me as it relates to my report. Not?
What takes so long that easement, we've been talking about that easement from that concrete plant, what, two years?
I'm not that guy that can answer that question on that.
Who that guy?
That person.
Who that person?
Uh, I'm gonna roll my eyes over there, I'm gonna roll them everywhere but right here. Left to the right, I, I can't, I don't have.
I think it's been since twenty twenty one when they've been talking about getting easements, and, uh, and we have, uh, attorneys that are working on it, but, you know, people all wanna just sell their property, so we have to wait for court hearings and all that stuff, so there's a schedule, uh, at this point, uh, from Olson, Olson's, their, their attorneys are.
What I will tell you is, anytime you start going through, and, and this, this happens all the time, L C I S D having this issue now, they done built a school. They started three years ago trying to get property for them to build a school out there in, uh, off of Baylor and seven twenty three. The school's building open, they still haven't concluded the legal proceedings for that. So it's not, if, if you don't get a voluntary donation, it is a process, it's just, just part of the game, it doesn't matter. Even though, because nobody wants their land infringed, their land rights infringed upon. And so the way that government is set up, you know, they always say people over profit, that's what I've always heard, that's my new term I've learned. And so it's not one of those situations where you can just go there and, and again, if it's not voluntary, it's a process. And it's not a, a, a three or a six month process, it is normally gonna take a couple of, couple of years. Any other questions for me? All right, did I do good, Mr. Olson? Okay, on the easement.
Agenda item four C, summer camps twenty twenty five report, Ms. Facility Graham.
Um, good evening, mayor, city councilmembers. Um, it is my honor to stand before you today and give your report about the Arcola City Hall Summer Program twenty twenty five. I was just sitting there kinda thinking, you know, sometimes you have to remember who you are, and know whose you are. My plan has always been with God and not man, and so summer twenty twenty five has been a reminder of that, that we had an amazing summer. And there's been some, um, dialogue about the program before I got up here today. And so from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty four, the city of Arcola has partnered with Community Express Inc. For the last four years. In twenty twenty five, the city has maintained total control of the program, which four, forty seven, five was allocated towards that program in order to run it this year. And so I've had the honor to be part of that program for the last five years, and I've never been more proud of any program that I've ever run throughout my career, um, of the youth from this community that actually was involved with the program. So part of the program elements were personal development, adaptive academic enhancement, civic and community awareness, hands-on job training. The hands-on job training actually was most definitely the most impactful part of the program. The program operated from June third to July twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, we served over fifty youth, our daily average was thirty one. The strongest element was middle school age, which was thirty eight percent, and that's because those kids mostly have grown up in the program. They, some kids have been with us for five years, five, mostly four, three, maybe three years. Sixteen percent of the youth counselors were job trainees, which that's a pretty high percentage of the total youth. Demographics was seventy eight point seven five percent African American, eleven point nine percent Hispanic or Latino, and nine point five percent other. One of the big parts of the program is that we provide two snacks a day, and we provide lunch. So we served nine hundred and thirty six meals, we provided eighteen hundred seventy two snacks, nine hundred and thirty six drinks, and eighteen hundred and seventy two bottles of water. What type of activities did we do? We did something different this year, we actually had court reenactments, we did dance classes, physical fitness, art workshops, aviation day, indoor-outdoor recreation, cooking demos, STEM projects, entrepreneurship and leadership, sports instructions. Key achievements, we expanded the program with five new field trips, eight returning interns, that was ages fourteen to seventeen. Counselors that was in training received twenty six hours of training, STEM innovation, our aviation day and science experiments. Forty three youth submitted submissions to our showcase art show this year. Career exposure through field trips, and guest speakers inspire civic engagement. Our job training program, as I said before, we had eight returning interns, our focus was on attendance, accountability, dependability, and job knowledge, skills, communication, decision-making, critical thinking. They also received twenty six hours of structured development, real-world mentoring and leadership practice. STEM is a big part of our program, in aviation, they always host us, the Black Pilots, they always host us over at the airport. And so we did attend this year, but we just did one day activity with them. We had a lot of hands-on science experiments, we actually visited the Houston Health Museum. We had a body, where they studied about the body before actually going through the museum, and so when you get into the museum, you actually get a chance to go through the body and learn and participate with that. As I said before, the aviation day with the Black Pilots of America, activities that they did, they did the flight simulation, the drone. We actually also made tour of the facility also. Art and wellness, weekly art workshops for stress management and self-expression. Forty three youth submitted submissions this year, our field trips was the Black Cowboy Museum, and we chose the Black Cowboy Museum on June seventeenth to celebrate Juneteenth, Topgolf, we had a STEM element with the Topgolf main event, same thing, we went there twice, and then we had the Houston Health Museum. We had the opportunity to go over to middle school, they didn't get a chance, but we had the people that, the daughter of the person that school's being named after, Amy Coleman, came to visit the kids, she actually teaches in Fort Bean I S D. She was an instructor over at Heritage Road, so some of the kids that was in our program went to her school where she was, and she got a chance to see them. And another gentleman named Purvis Hall, he also came and visit with the kids, and we had a great afternoon after they did their topping off ceremony at Middle School sixteen. Physical activities, we had basketball, soccer, football, ping pong, kickball, teamwork, sportsmanship, and just a lot of fun. The main thing that they did this year that I thought was really funny, that they learned how to play kickball. It's amazing how many kids don't know how to play kickball. And the impact in our incomes, we increased self-esteem and confidence, we strengthened identity and self-expression, enhanced peer community connections, expanded skills in art, wellness and leadership, exposure to diverse professionals, lifelong tools for stress management and success. And the very last thing is gonna be the budget, we were allocated forty seven, five, and we were slightly under that, a hundred and ninety two dollars and six cent under that. And the major costs are broken, broken down with salaries, job training, transportation, field trips, program supplies and food. And so I think that everyone that's sitting up on that D S tonight should be very proud, from the person that started the program and the person that has continued it, and our council members that have supported it throughout the years, the last five years. But I can sit up here and talk all day, but nothing's more important from hearing from the kids themselves. So we're gonna show you a short video of them talking about the program and what they actually experienced and got out of the program. So if you pay your attention to the screens, please.
Hello, so my name's Mariah, and I've been here for five years. Um, I started when I was a first, going to be a freshman in high school, and now I'm in college and I'm about to be a sophomore. So it's been a great experience, um, a lot of learning, of course, always. Um, a lot of learning, of course, always. There's always new skills to pick up. Um, the program has changed a lot from starting to now. We have so many kids who enjoy coming every single day.
Hi, my name is Rachel. This is my fourth year with the camp and just some things that I like, you know, cooking, working with the kids, dancing. Um, this camp has definitely helped me develop as a person, just working with kids. It helped me, um, realize my love for kids and how much I want to help them and just see them develop and help them through that process. As for my future, I decided to join the Navy and it's very exciting and new chapter in my life. I can't wait to start.
My name's Tori Goldberg. I started work, I was one of the first interns here. I did it for the first two years and then I went to college. And then I have internships and stuff, so this is my fourth year, I think, or third. I think this program has grown so much. Seeing it from the first year here versus now, it's almost a completely different program. We have more of a planned program and a planned itinerary of what we do every day. It's more scheduled-based, it's more productive, I feel. We try to incorporate different things. We try to incorporate whether it's painting, whether it's, um, going outside and doing kickball, whether it's court and out, like we try to teach them as much as possible without it being boring. We are very interactive, we're very, I think it's just productive. We teach them as much as we can, and I think every single person adds what they know into the group as counselors, whether it's sports, whether it's painting, whether it's dancing, whether it's cooking, whether it's courtroom, like we just teach them every single thing that we know that we can show them more of the world and give them more things that they enjoy. And the kids teach me so much, like all these new games and all these new, just things that are going on, trends, I guess, they're teaching me so much. They're also teaching me to have patience and they're teaching me that there's different ways of learning, which I think is super helpful, and I like it. I love being able to teach them, but also them teach me.
My name is Kaylee. Um, I was supposed to, when I graduated this year. I am going to start school in the fall to be a biomedical engineer, and I am ecstatic about that. Um, I honestly have loved these past three years. They've, they've helped me become a better version of myself. I used to have no patience whatsoever. I was, I was really irritable. I would get mad at like every little thing. But with kids, you have to have patience, like you have to direct them and guide them.
My name's Addison. I'm an intern for the summer camp this year. Um, I'm an upcoming senior, and this year is my third year. And it's been wonderful, especially seeing me, me and the other kids, the campers grow throughout the years. Um, I've noticed for myself that I'm not as in my little shell. You know, I'm more expressive and becoming more of a team leader and when directed stuff and like hosting little activities for the kids. This camp brings amazing opportunities. Um, I know for the first day we came, we had the aviation, um, uh, program, um, so. And we also go on different field trips, so that leads to like different opportunities for the kids to look into, see what they like and what they don't like and, you know, opening doors for them.
My name is Haeja Sabella, but at the camp I go by Danny. Um, I'm currently just past ninth grade, going to tenth grade, go to Almeda Crawford High School. And I've been a part of the camp for four years. Um, my first year I was on the camp just like the other kids. And my second year I was an intern due to my young age. But after that, I've been working here for two years as a, um, junior counselor. And honestly, from transitioning from camper to counselor, it's a little weird because a lot of the older kids don't see me as one. They like to like play around with me. They see me as like one of their own. Honestly, the older counselors have helped tremendously in my growth. Um, they do, like, they forced me to speak out a lot, and it's really helped my public speaking skills. Um, I used to just not be able to talk to strangers at all. And now I come from like ordering, ordering my own food at a fast food or asking for directions in a place, um, unknown. And honestly, it's just helped tremendously, especially with school, 'cause I do a bunch of after-school activities at school, and it's helped me over there with my speaking skills. And, mm, this camp, in my opinion, it's more tight, I wanna say it's more tight-knit than most camps because the counselors, we all, we all make it a goal to get along with each other. And in my opinion, we all do. Even though it's like our ranges range, our ages range from all over the place, from fourteen to like thirty or something, we all make it a goal to get to know each other. And we all work together in the camp, such as, um, maybe if one counselor is having too much trouble, like I tend to have with the older kids, they'll step in and assist. Or even if I have questions, I can ask one of the older counselors that been here for longer than I have. And so I, even though as a counselor I am co-teaching these kids, I do tend to learn a lot because of the amount of things we do and the amount of guidance we have at this camp.
Hi, I'm Tatiana and I'm going to the twelfth grade. I've been working here for two years so far and it's really been a journey for me. Um, I've really been having progress with working with the kids and stuff. And it's, I feel like it's only gonna get better. Well, I'm not feel, but I know. And, um, yeah, the kids learned a lot from here. A few things that they learned is cleaning up after themselves and teaching each other not to put their hands on each other because, I mean, they're kids and they like to have fun. Um, they like to try new foods and new snacks and things like that, new activities. They like to go outside and play games, you know, football, basketball, volleyball, all of that type of things. And they love court activities such as show and tell and things like that, and.
You know, it feels, it feels like a family somewhat. Um, some of the difference between last year and this year, last, this year we're a lot more organized. We have a lot more, well, we have a lot more fun this year. I feel like we get to, we get to connect with every kid. Like last year it was just groups and groups and groups. Now all the counselors are connected with all the kids and vice versa. Camps helped me a lot. I have a little mind, you know, speaking in front of people. It helped me, you know, get better at talking to other people, standing up. Standing up, you know, putting my opinion out there is, 'cause I used to be a little shy kid. I used to not talk. So it's definitely helped with me, like, my communication with other people.
I'm very athletic and that's how I connect with other kid kids.
I like amazing. I love all the children and they just work really well together. And us participating with them, it gives them more joy to wanna encourage them to participate as well. Leadership is a big skill that I have now compared to my leadership skills when I first started. Being put in a leadership role this year has changed my perspective of everything. And also me going to college and stuff, majoring in psychology, um, it makes me wanna work with kids more and also in that feeling because I see that is the feeling I wanna be in. So I say leadership skills, I have tremendously grown in that, being put in this position and, what's another skill I could say? Team effort and discipline. I would say discipline, learning to call things out when I see it or even for myself as me being a leader, seeing if I'm doing something a certain way that I can, I know that I can change and be better. I try to do that. So I would say those are some skills that I've picked up really well on and continue to grow in and better from now since the beginning. Me coming in as being a participant, I got to just come in and actually play and see, okay, I'm in the kids' shoes. So I know what it's like to be a kid coming here and not know what's going on and trying to engage and learn and stuff. Because when I first came, I was a little quiet, but not too quiet. But I just know how it is for a kid to come into the program. So me being in that position and then transferring to an intern, it was like, okay, I know most of these kids, 'cause I've seen them before when I was a participant. So just taking over that role and knowing some of the kids and knowing how they work, it was easier for me to actually take on the job and be an intern with them. And then moving into the leadership role, I'm growing up with the kids. So the kids coming back that have been consistently coming, they're growing up as well. So me being able to just navigate through that, it was pretty easy because I was a participant, so I knew how the kids were. So when I took the leadership role, it was easy as well because the counselors, I had now created a bond with them before being a leader. So we communicated well together in order to make sure the kids have fun and stuff.
The program is an amazing place for the kids. It allows them to be their self, and we have so many things that we do with the kids. So there's something that they can find that they really like for themselves and enjoy doing, and we drag it out for them to do. So there's so many things and opportunities, and also the field trips, they love that. And not only are they having fun, they're learning so much within having fun. So I think this is a really great program. Yes. Years from now, um, I might just be in my own company, who knows? Because I am cooking stuff in the books to have my own company doing psychology. So I would say being the leader and from now being the leader and taking that into the next, like, thirty years from now, having my own business, meeting others, or doing trainings. I would say that's what they would say about me thirty years. Um, art is like a sense of peace. So when we do art and paint for the art exhibit, I enjoy doing that with the kids. And some of the kids, they have some creative minds. They come up with some amazing stuff. And I'm like, wow, I would've never thought of that. Um, it's just like a piece, so I try to make everybody comfortable when they're painting. Um, I really like art. It's just a getaway space. You use your mind creatively to paint whatever you want, draw whatever you want. So I try to get the kids to do the same when they come up with their ideas. I'm like, use your mind, be creative. You can paint anything. Art is really, art is like you're speaking. If you can't get it out, you can paint through that. Paint your emotions, paint your picture, your muse, and tell a story through that. I really like art because it does tell a story.
I'd like to say, uh, I really appreciate, uh, that presentation. You know, that kids have always been one of my passions. So to see this program continuing, uh, is, is, is amazing. And, uh, yeah, so thank you so much for the good time with this program.
Okay, so everybody saw Mariah. Mariah's been in the program for the last five years. She started as a participant. She interned. And she went off to her first year of college as a freshman, and so she was a staff this year, which I promised that to her last year. If we came back, she will be a staff. But the amazing thing about Mariah is that you hear her talking about leadership and being a leader. She actually took on the role of learning how to run the program. She was the boss. I was back there for her backbone and support. And I think that she did an amazing job, and I wanted to feature her. And the kids just did an awesome job. I'm so proud of them. And I just wanna thank each one of you for investing in our future and investing in our kids. Thank you so much.
Good luck, girl.
Mariah is, is my neighbor. And it warmed my heart to see her say the things she said about this program. And it also bothers me that her mother created a department in this city. And unfortunately, uh, the city decided to treat her in the way that they did her. The other thing I wanna say about the program is that, uh, you know, kids talk. Word get around. Unfortunately, a lot of words land upside my head and I get a phone call about summer program. And not to rain on parade, but is it true that we had marijuana? One of the students was smoking marijuana in the restroom.
That's not true.
Well, and she was told. She told the people that, the other ones that came in there, counselors, told them that, uh, couldn't let be done to her 'cause her grandmother said on council.
I don't believe that's true. That's not true. That's not what happened.
Well, I don't know. I, you know, like I said, kids talk, and it got back to me, so.
I'll get back to you.
Don't worry about that.
Well, you know.
Yes. Wanted to bring it up.
Thank you. Thank you for it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Agent, item four D, State of the City Mayor, Delia Williams. Um, yes, so, uh, State of the City. I wanted to, um, maintenance. Uh, we, we have maintenance department, um, that we're trying to bring up to, snap on, uh, to make them into, create them into a public works department. Um, we, thank you, council voted last, uh, month to create, bring in a couple other FTEs because, uh, like you, this, this, you were saying earlier, um, it's on, um, that sometimes, you know, going through the neighborhoods, I see the grass looks like it's all grown up and stuff. And I've, I've drive through these neighborhoods all the time. And I had a, a resident called me from postal point and said, hey, can you come in and tell the maintenance to cut? They haven't cut for a month. I said, no ma'am, they cut last week. The problem is there is rain and it grows up so much during the season. And, and they're trying to, we have five workers, uh, maintenance workers now, and they're trying to divide their time. But, but by the time they go on one street, I tell you, two, three days later, it's, it's, it's already grown up again. But we are aware of it. Uh, the city back in, uh, the council back in November, uh, allowed me to have the authority to talk about increasing the maintenance. But also, uh, y'all let vote last month to increase the FTEs. Well, we have one person left maintenance department, so we fill that position with a new person. And then we have another person. So we still have that one FTE that we have to fill. One of the things I talked to the maintenance department about is maybe instead of, instead of, uh, filling that next, that other FTE with a person to be able to contract out to, you know, people that, uh, maybe some, uh, companies that have the type of equipment that we need. So, because right now we don't have the equipment. We have to invest in maintenance and we have to buy the equipment. But if we can contract out with some of these other companies who already have that equipment, we may be able to, you know, do a little bit more in the city. Because right now, some of the things that we wanna do that needs to be done, we just simply don't have the equipment that can reach way over to do what needs to be done. So we are working on that, and that may be something that we bring with the council. But I just wanted to talk to you about that because we had this conversation with maintenance this week about that. So we are, so I just wanted to let residents know, we are aware that, uh, maintenance is an issue and the grass and stuff that constantly growing up. And we, we're, we're trying to address that as quickly as possible. Uh, also, we have, um, there were some sewer taps that were allocated out to some of our residents in the last, uh, couple of weeks, the last week or so. Yep, most people know that we do not have any sewer capacity at this time. Uh, we had to come up with some creative ways to try to, uh, attain some of those, uh, taps. And we were able to attain about, to get about fifteen of those taps. And so we had residents who had already had permits, but we didn't have connections for them. And so we were allowed, they, they, they had, many of them had gotten into waiting list. So we looked at what our waiting list was and what I need was, and we asked about how we can, how we can do that. So that's how we were able to, you know, make sure that you were able to finish a project. But at this time, we're still in the same position that we don't have those sewer capacity. Uh, we may have, may have just a few of those fifteen left, just, but, but those, it's may, if it is, it's just a couple. So I just want y'all to know that we, we are not flush with sewer connections right now. And contrary to what's been said that we're charging people double, uh, for sewer taps, there are some people who for some reason, uh, have two-inch sewer lines. And, and since this administration has been in here, we have four-inch sewer lines. But they're just not completing the project, I guess, and they had to use grinder pumps to be able to make sure that that stuff is all grinded up and be able to go through the line. Otherwise, they may create backup. and be able to go through the line. Otherwise, it may create backups. Uh, cause you know, when you have sewer and paper and all that, if you're trying to go through a two inch line, it's gonna be a whole, it's gonna, you'll create problems. So we try to, uh, alleviate those problems. So we don't allow the four inch line. And so, yeah, I don't know, somebody may have had to do a grinder pump. I'm not certain. We talked to our operators and they said, we haven't, we haven't assigned anybody to get a grinder pump, which they have to pay the cost for that. And so, I, I don't know, they got put out that we were charging people double. We are not. It's the same rate as it's been and, uh, and what's in the books right now. We are seeking to do, um, heavy trash pickup and we have a beautification project where, uh, we have volunteers. We have about four volunteers right now that are going to, that are looking forward to it. They've asked him a couple of times. We don't know forward on it. And so soon as Chief Park gets back, then we are going to be sitting down to, uh, outline what needs to be done for that. We've had several businesses that we welcomed into the city, Seven Spice, the Taqueria. We have, uh, Arista Farms over on Corn Street that, uh, really did a number with some interns who, uh, they grew flowers this summer. They sold the flowers and they were able to use their proceeds to, uh, to, to donate to the Kerr County, uh, flood victims, which is something that we always want to, uh, instill in our kids, that sense of humanity and to help each other, you know, so I'm, I'm really excited about that. Um, I will say that our cultural festival, we have, uh, signed a date of October twenty fifth, which is Saturday. It'll be from four to eight P M. So this year, I think we're gonna have like a luau kind of theme, but we have a lot of different other, uh, cultural aspects to it as well. So I hope that y'all are able to make it out and come out and support the city for those things. Tomorrow, I'm having a meeting with the Fort Bend County Constable's Office. They have a product program, uh, that is called Families Helping Families. And what they're, they're going to try to do is they'll provide a full Thanksgiving meal for those people who are able to, you have to sign up for it, register for it, full Thanksgiving meal and seven days of groceries there after, including meat products. So, uh, we're trying to set that up with them, uh, on tomorrow and that will be something that we'll bring back before you all because with groceries and prices of groceries, I think that would definitely be beneficial for some of our residents. So we're looking forward to that. And, uh, I think, uh, Fire Marshal, I just want to say, uh, we have businesses in the city that I think Fort Bend County is supposed to have gone through and collected annual fees for every business in the city. And I don't know if Fort Bend County have been doing it, but our Fire Marshal is starting to do that. And I think he's already reached out to many of the businesses, but just know that that is coming. Cause there is, in every city, there's a cost to doing business in the city. And Arco is no different. It's just that, you know, sometimes people come to Arco and think that they don't have to do what they do in every other city. But just know that that is coming and Fire Marshal will be, uh, knocking on some doors here coming soon. So that's, that's all that I have right now. Moving on to Agenda Five, Regular Agenda Items. All items listed from A through C are up for discussion, consideration and possible action. Agenda Item Five A, uh, to approve the August twenty twenty five Municipal Operations and Consulting Report. Mr. Roland Liao, M O C Area Man- Manager of Operations.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm council members and residents here. I'm sorry for your loss. Council members. Y'all should have a copy. I also left a cup, a couple of copies out there if y'all wanted, were interested in going along with me. And looking at your operator's report, we're looking at August of twenty twenty five. We had a total of nine hundred and seventy-nine water connections. To the right, we had sewer connections, a total of one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five. And out of those, six hundred and eighty-eight were from Freshwater One. Just below, we're looking at your water plant. Your water well produced a total of seven million sixty-three thousand gallons. Six million five hundred and ninety-one thousand gallons were, were built out, which put us at a ninety-three accounting for. To the right, we're looking at your Dillink One account list. We had water and sewer, ninety-five accounts, sewer only thirty-two, and we do have one sewer club. Your revenue total was a hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and thirteen with ninety-one cents. And just below your wastewater treatment plant, it had an average daily flow of four hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and eighty-four. We had a total rainfall of two inches and a half and the wastewater treatment plant was operating forty-three percent permitted capacity. Just to the right is what was sampled is in permit and running good. You turn your page. We're looking at our daily operations report for the wastewater sewer treatment plant. You'll see some highlighted areas. One is your total gallons or your daily flow. And then your C L two, which is your chlorine residual for the plant after correction. And to the far right is your gallons that we took from Freshwater One at an average daily flow. Once again, that put us at a forty-three percent permitted capacity. If you turn your page, to the next, your D M R, which is what is standing at the wastewater treatment plant. The main one I always refer to is your E Coli because this is, um, something that's, that's harmful to humans. And we were at one point, oh, well below the maximum and we were good there. That's all I have on the operator's report unless y'all have any questions.
I make a motion that we, uh, okay the M O C for operations and council.
So, motion of the major program, obviously, for the M O C report. Uh, motion made by Councilmember Bigby, second by Councilmember Jones, all in favor. All in hold. Motion is passed.
Mayor, I'd like to say one more thing to the residents. I'm, I'm the operator for y'all operate your water plants, your sewer, your, your sewer treatment plants. I'm also, uh, involved in a lot of the calls when customers come in. And I, I know you, you'll, when y'all do call in, you'll always see an M O C guy with an M O C shirt either in a, in a gray truck or an M O C truck. And I just want to extend that if y'all ever have a question about your water, your sewer, what's going on, um, I'm the one mainly involved. That's what I do for the district, probably more than what they would be involved in or more than they would like to be involved in wastewater. So, um, if y'all ever want, whenever I'm here, as I walk out, y'all are free to ask me anything. I'll do my best to answer.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Agenda item five C, Financial Report for July twenty twenty-five. Dr. Annette Goldberg, the administrator.
Thank you, Congress. Mayor and council, I'm gonna go over the report that you have with you. I'm gonna start with general fund. I'm gonna go year to date with the last two columns on the right. That includes ten months. That includes, uh, also July. So if you go to page two, I will report the total operating revenue. This is the revenue that has been, um, accepted as of October twenty twenty-four. Our actual revenue for, from October to July has been four million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-six dollars. What was budgeted for the same timeframe is three million, eight hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two. As you can see, we have exceeded our budgeted amount of revenue, which is a good thing. I will take you over to page six of twelve at the bottom. I'm going to report the total expenditures from October twenty twenty-four through July twenty twenty-five. Total expenditure for that timeframe is four million, one hundred and sixty-one thousand, sixty-one dollars versus our budget at three million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifteen. The net revenue for actuals is twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen. And the net revenue for the actual budget is eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. Next, I will go over the enterprise fund. That, I, I will go over the last two, the last two columns. Year to date, October twenty twenty-four through July twenty twenty-five. Total revenue, the gross revenue, uh, it should be page one of two is a separate page on elimination. So the total gross revenue, this is for water and sewer, year to date, October twenty-four through July twenty-five is three million, six hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. Our budget for that same page timeframe is two million, nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seventy-two dollars. Again, you can see that the revenue exceeded the budget. I take you to the back of that page and I will go over total expenditures, year to date, from October twenty-four to July twenty-five. Total expenditure is one million, nine hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars. The, the year to date budget is two million, eleven thousand, two hundred and six dollars. The net revenue for the year to date actual is one million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars. The net revenue for the year to date budget, nine hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. We are in a positive. Primarily, there was a sale of the land that we sold the text off, that money has been reported. And we will make some adjustments. Any questions to you?
You didn't go down these, these, uh, I guess, itemized sheet. And I'm looking at I T support sixty-three, eighty-two.
What, what page are you on?
Sixty-three, eighty-two, three of twelve.
Three of twelve, okay.
Is that right? Uh, we budgeted twenty-five thousand for the month, I mean, for the year?
Yes.
And we actually spent seventy thousand?
Two hundred and sixty thousand. Yes, sir, that is correct. Those are actual numbers for a ten-month period.
Why do we budget so low and we spend so high?
This administration, uh, decided to go and do an I T audit. During that I T audit, we were very vulnerable in many aspects of the I T department. So we outsourced it. This council and mayor, uh, actually had a pin con contract and was voted on. So that's the variance that you're gonna see there. There is a contract that supports it and it came before council board.
Down at, uh, street improvements, under capital expenditures. We budgeted sixty, right, at sixty-four thousand? Where do we spend that, that seventy-seven at?
I don't have that, the QuickBooks up and available to look at it, but I'm more than happy to provide you.
I mean, this street improvement, we don't have that many streets. We're out of nowhere spending seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Well, you know, forty-nine thousand dollars that was spent on Rice Avenue. And some of that was going, correcting those speed bumps over in, uh, Findel Manor. And, uh, you know, I, I'd have to look at the rest of it. I don't remember everything, see everything, ever seen. But, uh, that's, that's what that was.
The contractor inspector, is that, uh, Hern?
Yes, sir, that is.
On, uh, how did the engineer almost double? Sixty-two oh two.
As you, mayor, may not recall, there have been a lot of issues related to our lip station. And we've had to have engineering services. Uh, in addition to that, he sent a lot of engineering workforce to the parking lot and the streets and the ditches.
And also, um, a number of projects that were already, that we had to relook, redress, um, that we had to go back and get our city engineer to look over, uh, some work that had already been done. That was not done properly, that we had to have redone again. So.
What type?
And we're still doing it.
What, what type? What type? I'm sorry. What type of, uh, he had to go back and read?
Uh, we've had to have our, uh, engineer to look at the triple A, sixty-seven thirteen private, uh, five twenty-one. We've had to have him to look at some of the stuff over at La Dona Street. We've had, also had to have, in addition to that, because I know you're going in next, attorney fees, a, a lot of additional attorney fees, uh.
Yeah, this is all engineer. I'm not talking about the time.
Yeah, I know, I understand. But I'm just saying, uh, so with, along with those projects, in addition to the engineering, we also had to have attorneys also look over some of that stuff.
This, uh, repairs and maintenance, what's, what's the fifty-two thousand?
I'd have to get an itemized stick and QuickBooks. I'm more than happy to provide that to you.
When?
When would you like it?
Tomorrow.
What time?
Not now.
Okay, uh, what time?
So, we are happy, let me see, can you set up a time? Set up a time for him to come up here and go over, uh, this itemized list of things.
Okay. Uh, council member, I am doing a training tomorrow. That's why I wanted to know if they're on it. I just wanted to be respectful of the request.
One of, this, uh, contract label power marshal, it was budgeted fifty-five thousand, fifty-five hundred, close to whatever.
What G L you on, sir?
Eighty-five, sixty.
Okay, I'm there.
And we actually, and that's three hundred and seventy-six. Did it change once we put him on payroll or what was that?
Yes, sir. He moved from that item to payroll.
So we don't have no more contract label with power marshal, right?
No, sir, but there are expenditures that have to be reported and that's what we're seeing.
While we don't police chief get back.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you. One thing about it while I'm here, we go do everything above board, so I, I'm happy for anybody who wants to sit up and come up and have time to sit down and go over our book. Because one thing I'm not looking is to do anything illegal or allow anybody up here in my presence and under this administration to do so. So I welcome anybody from the city of Arco who wants to come in and look at the books to do so. As a matter of fact, I would, I'd welcome professionals to come in and, and look at it. So, uh, it's just that, it's just that, you know, I, you know, I, I want to be respectful of this, this council and listen, y'all, we're not trying to, we're not trying to look to a gotcha moment for the city, y'all. I, Ms. Ms. Bird, I really just want you, we, you were.
These are legitimate courses, man.
They are, but you.
And I'm just asking these courses.
Since you, for the six years, for the six years that you were here in this house.
Now we go back to.
That's the same way that the, the financials are being reported now, is the same way.
And I ask the same courses.
No, you didn't.
Nobody look at the videos.
And, and, and so what I'm just asking.
You understand.
If you would come in.
In the back room.
If you were to come in to find a way to help, if you have some concerns, come in and find a way to help the city. Instead of trying to point out every little thing that you think we're doing, because we're not doing anything wrong.
I refuse anybody.
So I just want you to.
I never excuse nobody.
Okay, uh.
Please.
Oh, this is just, come on. Come, sir. Okay. Yes, I, I entertain a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approve the foundation report for July twenty twenty-five.
A second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Mayor Protem, A bar, all in favor.
Aye.
All in hold. Motion is passed.
So abstain from voting.
Um, um, this next item, uh, discussion of item C under the regular agenda items, we are going to actually defer that to next week. There are some, uh, issues with the, uh, address as well as the legal description. And so we're gonna rectify that, clarify that and bring it back before, before this council. So can I get, entertain a motion, please, to?
I make a motion that we, uh.
Page one, number six. Page C.
Item C until next meeting to have the correction that we needed to make.
So, second motion.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, second by Mayor Protem, A bar, to bring that before the council, for this, for this meeting. All in favor.
Aye.
All in hold. Motion is passed. Agenda item six, Plans, Plats and Permits. Six A, discussion consideration of and possible action to address the preliminary plaque for Glendale Lake, Section Seventeen, City of Arco, Fort Bend County, Texas, Mr. Laris Turner, Kaluza Inn.
All right. You have it for you this evening, Glendale Lake, Section Seventeen. Uh, this is a subdivision that's within the E T J of the. Uh, this is a subdivision that's within the E T J of the city of, city of Arcola. Uh, this particular development consists of seventy-five single-family hot homes. Uh, the track is again located in a mud district, mud one forty-one. Uh, the primary act says, uh, for this particular track right here is off of Cohen. I remember what I'm saying, that road, right? Yes, it's off of Cohen Road, and then it comes into this particular development. This is all still part of the master plan, but Glendale Lake subdivision, uh, which is something that you've seen several times. Again, this is the seventeenth time that I'm coming for you, and I probably have a few more times. Um, this is a preliminary plaque, so we'll approve the preliminary plaque, or you'll take it under consideration. After that, they'll submit their construction plans. We'll review it, make sure they're all in compliance with the rules and regulations. And then we'll come back with a final plaque. Other than that, uh, we had some comments. We sent that to them. Our recommendation is to approve the plaque, the preliminary plaque, uh, Glendale Lake, section seventeen. I'll entertain any questions anyone have with me as it relates to this plaque.
I make a motion that we approve, um, Glendale Lake, section seventeen plaque with the corrections of our engineers' advice.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mayor Protem Abar, second by Councilmember Bigby, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion is passed.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a fever. You can just tell me. This is the time. Mayor and council, uh, Ingrid, our city secretary, has passed out the proposed budget for M Y twenty-six. I would like for you to know that you will be considering it September sixteenth, just next Tuesday. Uh, except for tomorrow, because I'm attending a training. I welcome anytime to meet with you individually. I cannot meet with more than two people at the same time. You are free to call me, uh, and I will, or email me, and I'll be more than happy to set up a Zoom if that's possible. I'm meeting with the only person to go. I'm about to. Again, you have it before you and a consideration vote will happen September sixteenth, just next Tuesday. Thank you, mayor.
I think that's it. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion for adjournment. It is now seven thirty-two P M. Do I hear a motion? So. No, 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 no.
Second.
A motion has been made by, uh, Councilmember Jones, second by Mayor Protem Abar, adjournment, all in favor.
Aye.
All opposed. The meeting is adjourned.